Good afternoon, everyone. The January State Board work session will now come to order. Denise, please call the roll.
Rachel Wise?
Yes.
Glenn Flint?
Here.
Lilly Larson?
Present.
John Whitzel?
Here.
Molly O'Halloran?
Present.
Patricia Tim?
Yes.
Maureen Nichols?
Yes.
Patrick McPherson?
Present.
Commissioner Bloomstead?
Present.
All present.
Thank you. Information regarding the Open Meetings Act is posted on the east wall of this room, on the south side of the door. Live web streaming will be available through the State Board of Education website, www.education NE.gov/StateBoard. Board members, please remember to engage your microphones before speaking and turn them off when you're finished speaking. Please turn off your personal cell phones. Thank you. Item two is Board Reports, Dates and Discussion Items. So let's have a little bit of a discussion on where we've been since December and the kinds of things that we have been doing. So if anyone wants to report out on regional area or district meetings, when we talk about national meetings, we'll take a few minutes to talk about the NASB webinar at that point as well and have a little bit of discussion about that for those who attended and listened in on the live webinar or who followed up after. So anyone want to report out? John? And then Glenn.
I had the honor of attending the Wakanda Assistance Visit with the Omaha Public School District. Wakanda Elementary School was the elementary school that has a new principal, half the new teachers, and they're going forward very, with a lot of enthusiasm, and they're going to make things happen. They're going to completely, if you will, move ahead. There's no doubt about it. And also, I was honored to represent the State Board at the Open Door Mission at Christmas, where we served, if you will, meals to a lot of the people that were challenged and needy of that day. So I thank you very much.
Glenn?
Janine Thieler and I went to Liberty Elementary and Spring Lake Elementary and watched some blended learning classes there. That was very informative, and they're having good results with those students over there. And then Rachel and I, along with some of the rest of the staff, went over to Cedar Rapids, Iowa, and looked at some of their competency-based education courses. And that was very interesting, and we learned a lot from that. So more on that later, I suppose.[163.13][163.13](Laughter).
More on that when you report out on the committee as well. Yeah, it was a, luckily, there was no snow. That's all I was worried about, so. Molly?
I'd like to share some information from the NA-CIA meeting. That's the Nebraska Association of Curriculum Instructors. It was very informative because they were actually in the trenches as it related to AQuest unfolding. And they talked a lot about our EBAs, our Evidence-Based Analysis. And they said, as we proceed, they realized that we put it out to get feedback. And as curriculum directors, they said, in their districts, sometimes there was disparity in subjective analysis of their evidence. And they said, it would be helpful if we, as a state board, would try to work what they're already doing in evidence-based analytics as it relates, for example, to advanced ed. I guess a lot of the same points of evidence-based analysis are being required for continuous improvement to whether, they were talking about advanced ed. But they said, Matt, as your technologists kind of figure out ways so that we don't have districts gaming the system, but instead we have districts not doing redundant efforts, but actually using what they've already done and just plug it into the system of AQuest, that makes AQuest more valid because what they're already doing for continuous improvement is being validated. And if there are needs improvement schools, what we are going to do is ask for their plan on continuous improvement, right? And so some of these curriculum instructors were in schools that were in needs of improvement, and they said their going, their go-to plan is, first of all, to hit whether their frameworks are advanced ed, to go to their plan for continuous improvement. And if we're using EBAs that are in alignment with similar language, that will help them know how to ask and allocate resources most effectively. They also said that AQuest was exciting and that it was really driving the conversation, not just among curriculum directors and teachers, but their principal leaders and their school board members. They said that their local school boards were talking about the same, same new concepts in regarding to the tenants that they were. And this is my final comment about the curriculum meeting. They said that there is a grave need in Nebraska for emotional, social-emotional support of students. The curriculum directors said, AQuest ultimately is going to improve student achievement, right? Even though that's what No Child Left Behind was supposed to do, it only focused on tests. The curriculum directors said that their guidance counselors in many of their schools are not able to deal with the mental issues that some of their young, even youngest children are exhibiting. They're finding that there are children coming in that not only aren't potty-trained, but they have violence toward other children. So they did have a request, and Matt, I don't know if, if NDE is big enough to consider this, but they said it would help if there was a systemic approach to social-emotional wellness as it relates to schools. And how can we best deliver the support to the leaders so they can actually spend more time on curriculum and instruction? I'm sorry, I'm coughing. Thank you.
Thanks, Molly. Anyone else want to, before that? Now, I'll just sort of put a couple of things. I attended a short meeting between FS1 and FS8, FS8 presented seven, in North Fork, and thank you, Bill Mulroney, who's the Minister of the ESRA, if I can speak here today. And it was a great session where they were doing some visioning and some kind of strategic thinking, and many elements around AQuest came out of that process. And they put together kind of a direction that they're going to help build some of the strengths and needs around those areas. Mental health, behavioral health needs was a high topic there as well, and so I appreciate it being able to attend that meeting. And then also, last night, I was able to attend the revisioning session that the Career and Tech Ed groups are doing around the state, they're doing revisioning sessions with different school districts that have applied for revisioning grants. And in this case, ESU 2 is facilitating 10 schools that have come together around the revisioning process. And they're holding four regional meetings, and the first one was last night in West Point. And just a great, if you haven't had a chance to sit in on one of the revisioning sessions in a community in your area, in your region, touch base with Fitch Cott and the Career and Tech Ed groups to find out what's scheduled. They're just fascinating to be able to listen to what communities are talking about, what needs are. And in this case, it's looking at regional processes and a collaborative approach between 10 separate school districts on what can we do to really create this vision and different collaborative processes on sharing resources between schools and meeting needs of students. So again, if you get a chance to attend any area, please, I would encourage you to do so. I think that's, if there's nothing else, let's just talk for two minutes then from a national perspective. I don't think anyone that attended any national meetings, but there was the NASB webinar on ESSA. Every student succeeds action, and we're working this ESSA. And I know some of us weren't able to get in on the webinar, I think running maybe down in the tail end on, well, we're in Cedar Rapids, but we were able to hear it, you know, after the fact as well. So is there any comments? And thank you, Don Lynn, for your coming in as well. Anyone want to share?
Well, I too want to thank Don Lynn for sending, making those notes from when she listened to it live, because it really helped me, because I read through them all, and then when I listened to the webinar this last weekend, it really helped to make things more concrete and understandable for me. So I really do appreciate all the extra work that Don Lynn went to, and I thought it was an excellent webinar.
Anyone else? Comments? Molly?
In looking at the analytics of ESSA, it really appears that what we're doing with AQuest is going to be supported by the federal direction. I do think that we, as a board, are still going to have to make some decisions, especially as it regards teacher-principal evaluation, to what extent we want to use it to create more effective teachers and principals. And our committee will be reporting out on that later. But I also think it's wonderful that the federal overreach is drawn back a bit, and it does put more responsibility on the states. I do want to note, though, that we still are being required to have testing in three, in reading, writing, math, and science. So we're not losing sight of performance. And I would just ask this board to really note, whether those gap groups that we have in Nebraska, let's make sure we don't lose sight of those different aggregate groups that are underperforming. I think as we focus on the whole child in AQuest, so it'll, what do they say, the whole boat will rise, and maybe it'll help all the, all the kids. Thank you.
Thanks, Molly. I concur, and I do think there's some really important work for us to probably start to be looking at in the next few months as a result of the change and how it interfaces with the work that, that we're doing. And so, Don Lynn, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
Well, I would just say you're all giving me far too much credit, but I thought NASB did a really nice job of lining things up very succinctly and had it chunked in a way that was easy to quickly understand. One thing that I thought was really great, at the end, Executive Director Amundson said, you know, what is your State Board's strategic vision? Use this opportunity to reevaluate and re-articulate your board's vision. And I thought, perfect timing, so.
Mm-hmm.
That was encouraging.
Very much so. Any other comments, questions? Thanks, Don Lynn. If not, let's look at some of the upcoming meetings. I know we've got the enterprising Proposition Luncheon and Panel Discussion on January 21st that I think we're all invited to. It looks like Maureen, Molly, and I think I will be attending that particular. Anybody else attending? Pat? Okay. I think January 12th was their deadline to RSVP from the stuff they sent to us. The, and this is always, I will not use the acronym, the Nebraska Association of Gifted Conference is 2016 Cluing In Unraveling Differences in Gifted Education. It's February 25th and 26th in Omaha. It looks like Lilly and Molly are going to be attending. Anyone else? John? Anyone else thinking of attending?
What meeting is that?
That's the Nebraska Association of Gifted, and their conference is February 25th and 26th. And they do an amazing job. It is an outstanding conference. It's, it's-
It sounds like I've seen anything out of that. If somebody could send something to me.
Will do. And we can still come back to that in February, so we'll send some things out on the, that upcoming conference. Any other upcoming activities that anyone wants to add? Okay. If not, the only other meeting that we have that I don't know if we'll talk about a little bit, maybe tomorrow in wrap-up, and, and that would be the Legislative Retreat and Senate Reception, which will be January 25th that we'll be having. And so I'm assuming that we'll spend a little more time on that later. Okay? Then I think upcoming national meetings, we have the Governmental Affairs Committee in January. Molly, you'll be attending that, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anything else coming up? Any other items, Commissioner?
One other thing, NASB Legislative Conference, number one, February.
Okay. We can make sure information gets out on that. Okay. Yes.
One thing about ESSA that we didn't comment upon is, did you notice that they're putting a stress not on just college and career, but civic ready? Did, did you notice that? I thought that was kind of cool, really talking about building citizenship as part of the ESSA, ESSA mission. And when we have our legislative meeting, that might be nice to at least share with them parts of ESSA that do relate to legislative activity. Thanks.
Okay. And then the Commissioner just handed me the other piece coming up will be NERCSA in March, and usually there's some sort of a board panel, a board presentation, and that's like March 17th. But we'll get the information sent out about NERCSA, and it's usually in Kearney.
Yeah.
It's usually held in Kearney, and that's the Nebraska Rural Community Schools Association that's coming up.
Is that in that district?
Yes. So it would probably be, it's usually that, like Wednesday night, Thursday, Friday, that's coming up. Is there anything else that we need to touch base relative to national meetings? I've got on my notes the, are you going to talk about either of those? The, so, anything to?
Sure.[903.41][903.41](Laughter).
I just don't know that there's anything if, yeah, Don Lynn had anything to add.
We don't have any extra coming in.
I think it's just kind of a marker of, okay.
It's just a reminder for me.
All right, then if there's not anything else, we will move on to discussion of action items. And the first action item is discuss granting the Commissioner-
Let's see what we did. This is missing on my Commissioner's review.
I thought there was something missing.
That's why I was like, yeah.
Yeah, I'm like, there's something missing here.
Not that I matter at all.
And here we go. Commissioner, item three. There's our problem.
All right. You didn't make the notes. All right.
Yeah.
First of all, just my, you know, regular reminder of our consent agenda, so if you have any items, go ahead and fill out the pink slip, get them to Margaret. Any questions, we'll organize staff as, as you need. I have on here always the, now the report of rules that are upcoming. And so probably, no, there's, I think there's, let's see, going off the top of my head, I'll use what's actually there. But the Rule 1, I think Rule, let's see, down here, 1, 2, and Rule 83 all kind of have some things that are administrative, accounting types of things to be changed. Rules 12 and 13 dealing with exempt schools, homeschool students. By the way, compliments to our staff, they've done a lot of great work with, with that team and with folks from the, from that community around coming up with some concepts. I think we've had Senator Beau McCoy involved in the conversations as well, but really have come up with, I think, a solid approach to how we, how we manage that, basically simplifying our processes. And I'm, I'll probably screw it up. One of them, where Rule, Rule 12 will be rolled essentially into Rule 13, so we'll have one rule. But there's some other things that they did that did a nice job, so Bryce, Brian, and others that, that worked on that, a lot of credit to them, so. But with that, we'll have hearings on all those fronts coming up in the near future, and then those rules will be in front of you later, assuming that everything goes fine in the, in the hearings for approval. And then, yeah, the, this is the one that got to us. I don't think Don Lynn necessarily has anything on board priorities and additional policy research, but I don't want to-
Other than we received our $15,000 for our NASB grant, so, but that will be waiting to kind of blend that in with our strategic planning process, so I don't feel we have anything else.
So it does provide us a little bit of extra resources in that arena, so.
Has the visitors' schedule been clarified?
No. I'm waiting for them.
And just in the nick of time, I put this additional update here on the English Language Proficiency Assessment, ALPA, as we get to call that. So Diane and Teri are here to talk a little bit about that. The reason I put it here is we're not really ready to ask for anything in particular, but I felt it important to try to, to update you on where this process is at. There's a lot of work happening around assessment requirements on ALPA, and I guess I'd invite, invite you up if there were any, any particular things you would like to highlight. We did include just a few little outline notes on the agenda as well, and they gave a little bit of history about it, you know, certainly hit the highlights you think would be helpful, Diane, so.
Okay. Are we, is this on? Yes. Okay. Sorry, we were almost late. We were on a conference call that's still going on, so we'll finish this up and go back to the conference call. I'm really going to turn most of this over to Teri because she's working very closely with the ALPA assessment, and I trust her profusely, so I'm going to let her kind of go on, and I will interject if needed.
Okay. And profusely, I'm trusted, so that's awesome. I'm sorry, we had another conference call going on, too, because I did want to introduce you to a new Title III consultant that we have. As you might remember, my old friend Nancy Rowell retired a couple of years ago. Some of you know Nancy. And when I stepped into those shoes, for two years, I didn't have any help that was me previously. So I'm, we were pretty excited to have a new member on board, which I was hoping to introduce you to today, but she's on the other call with ESU 7, so sorry about that. But she might, she might show up here in a minute. But Brooke is, is great. She came to us from, she was teaching ELL in Chelsea, Massachusetts, right side of Boston, in a very large immigrant area. And before that, she got her career started at Benson High, and a graduate of UNL. And while she was working on a master's at Boston University in language and liter-, what is it, language and literature or education, whatever it was, she worked with nonprofits, adults and adult literacy, and so it was, she's really bringing a lot to our team and has been really great. So she and I have been deep, deep, deep into the ALPA 21, which is the, the assessment that the state requires for all English language learners in our state. We are, we kind of feel overshadowed. We're glad to come today and update you on what the work that we do, because we're often overshadowed, shadowed by our big brother Title I, as well as our other big sister assessment over in Valerie's team. So even though we kind of belong to both, we don't get a lot of attention, so yay for today. So we took this opportunity, then I did, to kind of give you an outline of the history of the assessment and how it came to be and what, and when that happened, which of course dates back to 2001 and that momentous occasion of NCLB being passed. And so Nebraska and other states having no assessment whatsoever for English language learners kind of band together with other states in order to develop it. And that assessment was ELDA, the English Language Development Assessment, that we've been giving for since 2007, I believe I said, or six. Six, one year, and seven, it was sort of staggered in the grade levels that we assessed that year. And we, and we've been very happy with it, but it's a paper-based assessment. And the reason that we needed to move to something else was, I was looking over one of the questions in it recently, and it showed a kid going into a video store, and it was a speaking item, and the question was, what is he doing? Well, kids today would not know what that was, you know? So you can see that items age out and our, and things change, and so it became clear that we were going to have to find another way. And of course, that takes money. And so what we decided to do was join another state collaborative that was, was applying for a EAG, we say, which is an enhanced assessment grant, so that Nebraska would not have to do all that work or, or pay for it all on their own. So that's what we've been working diligently on for the last two years, is developing the ALPA 21, which stands for the English Language Proficiency Assessment for the 21st Century. And this test will be largely online, unlike the last test, although there will be still a small paper pencil portion for kindergartners and first graders in order to be, for them to be able to show what they know and can write without having the keyboard skills to be able to do the online assessment. So with that little caveat, it is largely online, and we're, we're very excited about it. In the development process, I just might add that not only have I and, and Brooke, since joining in August, been on many of the, the task teams in the hands-on, very hands-on development of it, I'm on the Executive Board, the Consortium Council, as well as the item development team. So I was able to get many Nebraska, recruit many Nebraska teachers to be involved in the process, and so they, at least 23 of them, at my last count, have participated in all aspects of it. I think I wrote down there for you, for your referral. They wrote items, they reviewed for content and bias, they helped inform the blind and low-vision forums, which we're also developing, they participated in the range finding, and for those of you that are not assessment geeks, that means that we were looking at the constructed responses, like the writing and the speaking, actual answers that the students gave in the, in the field test, and then arranging them in such a way as they'll be, we'll be able to use them as anchor papers in order to grade the assessment. So lots of work being done by Nebraska teachers, and there's still more work. I'm going to be begging them this week to, to join in the contrasting group studies in order to get the standard setting going this summer. So we're, we're excited about it. And 23 of our districts participated in the field test, so another plus for this test is that our own Nebraska student data is included when we, the important work of standard setting. It's not going to be set on all students from some other place. Many of them will be our own students. So that's just a little bit about, about the test. Now, the way the grants work is that there is a beginning and then there's an end. And so the end is approaching of the work that has been funded by the collaborative that was working on it. So now we are looking at ways in order to continue that work, so that we don't get into the situation I described before, which was that the student is going into the video shop and the item is a bad item, and we have no way or a structure in place to replace items. So the work of the test kind of goes on, because it, that they have to be refreshed ongoing. And so we're, that's what we're trying to figure out now, is how is the best way to do that. So in our research, we, we decided that it would be best to be connected to a university that could house the project. And that entity is going to be UCLA Crest, and that Crest is their assessment arm of UCLA. And states are given two choices of how to be members to continue to be able to deliver the ALPA 21. One choice is to be a basic member, in which I think on page two of your handout, it lists all the services that would be available. It's basically ju, that is just the basics of the test and having access to the test, but it does not include the delivery of the test, which is a testing vendor that a state would typically contract with to deliver. So it's just access to the test, but not delivering the test. On the other hand, the second choice is the comprehensive membership, which includes all of the services of the basic member, but it would then include the vending services and the reporting of the scores and all of that work on the, on the end end that, that are important to schools and the actual nuts and bolts of giving the test. So that's the one we're, we're recommending. Right under that, I did a basic cost analysis to see which would be in the best interest financially for Nebraska. And based on my estimations, I'm, I'm recommending, along with Diane, the comprehensive membership. Now, I remember that Mr. McPherson had some good comments last time about ensuring that there would be competitive bidding. And so I think that we have answered that by, even though we would be contracting with UCLA Crest, they in turn, on behalf of the states, not just our state, so we would have an economy of scale and much, many more students to get a better price, would then let an RFP for the, to subcontract those services. So there would be a competitive bidding process, it's just that Nebraska would not have to go it alone and potentially not get a price that, that groups of states could probably get. Okay? So that's kind of how, how it works. And so I went through and kind of outlined from the information that I have from ALPA 21 and Crest to figure out what that would be. And as it, as it comes out, I'm estimating a total cost based on 20, I believe, based on 20,000 students, which, you know, we're always based on a per student cost, so we never quite know exactly how many we're going to have, but based on the past experience, I've just kind of added 500 each year, which has been basically what's been going on for the last several years. And so that cost would come out to be about 521,400 versus belonging to the consortium to have access to the test and getting our own vendor, which based on the contract negotiated for this year of 664,000. So that's kind of what I might, you know, I'm not a mathematician. I did teach fifth grade math, but it, to me, that's, you know, makes, I mean, it's just, it is what it is. It's just per pupil cost, and that's what the, the numbers, with the numbers that they've given me. So what we're, I guess what we're recommending is that Nebraska continue to deliver the ALPA 21 through the services of Crest, and Crest would then help us by negotiating a vendor to deliver the test. And then we could continue activities such as professional development. Our hope is that by belonging to it and pooling our state resources among other states, that we can then perhaps add on to our product by, you know, adding professional development pieces, by thinking about formative assessment and how that could fit in. And I will say one thing, too, that this is an assessment system. It includes, our last test was just a summative assessment. This test is going to include a screener instrument, which is required under the Office for Civil Rights to identify students. That's how we know whether they're ELL in the first place. So there's- So there's really two tests, that the ELDA and the ELPA 21 are the summative version, but then we also have this screener that, that districts are required to purchase on their own currently. So all districts might order the Loth or the Woodcock Mignolets or some other instrument that they have to do, they have to buy, in order to identify students as ELL in the first place. This system would be, the screener would be included in the cost, so that would be a huge savings to our districts. That's another real bonus because they really do have to set aside funds. Because it being under OCR requirement, Title III cannot pay for any assessment like that. So that's always been their responsibility, and they've been calling me a lot, asking, when is this going to be available? Because they don't want to order more. So this would be a way to save our districts' money as well. And the screener, the advantage of using the screener versus the Loth or the Woodcock Mignolets or the IPT or the other instruments that are out there that are allowed by Rule 15, would be that, that the items on the screener were developed at the same time as the ELPA 21 summative items. They are not the same items. They were developed by the same developers at the same time, built to the same standards. Whereas the screener items being delivered now are not, they're who knows what standards, not any standards that are our standards. So that would be another
Advantage.
advantage to it. That, and I think I mentioned that all the data that is with this test, not all of it, but a good part of the data is Nebraska student data. So that's another advantage as well, especially, and that's being used for the screener too. So for both instruments, we would have Nebraska student data.
So, so what I might kind of highlight, so the reason that I put this into my, first of all, I asked them to provide me an update, and I thought I'd be able to provide you an update of all that information. Then I decided that I wasn't necessarily that bright or be able to walk through all those components of it. But really, it's a unique circumstance, and normally, normally, and by the way, Terry has joined the federal programs team, was part of the, the formerly the Equity and Instructional Strategies team, and so as we shift through and go, how are we going to get things really accomplished? This one kind of surfaced. In order to join this, we have to kind of be able to move over the next couple of months, or, you know.
Within the next month.
Yeah, so, so I wanted to make sure to be able to have this in front of you, so you could see that, understand the detail of that instead. And really what we're asking is to join with this consortium and paying for those services. So that's why I wanted to be able to put that in front of you today.
And, and, yeah, it's Washington, Oregon, Iowa, Kansas, Arkansas, South Carolina, West Virginia, Louisiana. I think I didn't miss any.
I think Pat had a question.
You just answered one of my questions. The RFPs, do we, that is an addition, additional cost beyond this five hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, is that right?
No, it would be included in joining with the, with Crest. They would be in charge of that. So we would not have to pay that, no.
We wouldn't have to pay anything additional beyond this?
No, our member services is going to cover that service. It's included within the member services.
So if they end up paying, you know, taking a contract that's less than what they expected, we don't get any benefit out of it essentially?
Well, let me think.
Well, it's on a per pupil basis, the cost.
They, you know, I, I don't know that that would happen, but I, you know what, I'm not going to be a huge expert in the nuts and bolts of that, but I have had Paul Haas as well as Dave Robinson looking at it. We're looking, we're
I'm sorry.
Dave Rasmussen.
I got the attorneys wrong. Don't tell him I said that.
Okay.
It's recorded.
I know he's not missing it. Because he is my best friend on that. But he and I have been going through it, and as well as we've had meetings with Paul and Harlan, trying to make sure that we're not missing anything on that. And what we plan to do is have an upper, we're going to definitely ride into our contract, you know, that it's not going to go above a certain amount. So we're going to agree to a per pupil amount and that it, that nothing goes above.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Any other question?
Just a simple quick question.
Tom, then Molly.
I'm sorry, Molly, but you probably already went over this. Funding for this, is this going to be general budget, flow through, or is it going to be grant?
These are federal assessment dollars.
Great, super. Thank you.
Molly?
I noticed you said the scores are used to exit students from the ELL status. And Terry, I'm just kind of curious, you always talk about every student every day, and we do have immigrant students that come not knowing how to speak English. In this consortium, are you also going to be able to access textbooks that are, you push a button and it's in Somali and or push a button and it's in Syrian or Spanish? So when they can learn until they can transition to English?
Okay.
I just, I'm curious. I just, I know that technology can do that.
That would be a really different topic than what our purpose is here, although it's interesting topic. The, I just will remind everybody, because I do this, I get calls like this all the time, that our, our, the purpose for our task is to measure how much English that the students are making, how much progress are they making in learning the English language. So when we talk about accommodations that we might for NISA, that's a different animal, because for NISA, we want to know how much content have they learned in math, regardless of perhaps the language, right? But for this particular task, it's unique to just English. So we don't allow as many accommodations as what NISA may help, may allow. And so what, the only parts where we would possibly have any translation on this test would be in the overall directions, so that, that students would know what they were supposed to do. Like, we're going to take it, today we're going to take a test to, to see how much English that you know. And that might be the end of it, you know, we're, it's, and when you're finished, you need to, you know, these kind of overall directions may be able to translate it, but the test itself and all of the questions, that would not be our purpose for this.
So let me kind of just get my mindset on this. So our Nebraska ELLs are required to take the assessment. And so the screening would be very important, since it's, it's very comparative to the exit test, the summative assessment.
Exactly.
So back to a school district, I'm kind of seeing how this relates to our ESUs in our school districts. If you have a large immigrant population, and you realize this through your ELL test, then it would be up to that district then to access NDE or their ESUs to provide that adaptive learning, to transition them to English, right? Is that what happens?
Well, you know, a lot of different things happen in the districts, and it depends on their resources and how many ELLs they have. I mean, we could spend the next three days talking about the different scenarios that we hear every day of students, because they can come anywhere. If a student comes and enrolls in Lincoln or Omaha, there are resources in place and set up to make sure that that student is placed in the best place possible at their language level in order to gain initial access into the curriculum. That's, Omaha and Lincoln have that
Down.
those procedures in place. And I might add, they do it very differently. Just because they have procedures in place, but doesn't mean they're the same. You know, they have different options in Omaha as they do in Lincoln. But when we have very, very small districts, when, when students enroll, it becomes very, very challenging. And those are what I call the nine-one-one calls that I get. And so it, it, it becomes a very creative process. We try to work, they call me Brooke, our new person, yay, who happens to be a high school ELL teacher previously, and I was the elementary, so it's like, yay, we've got it covered. But, or, and then we get them in touch with our intermediary agencies, which are ESUs that hold a Title III grant. And I, we have folks in place there that are able to provide technical assistance and help them with developing an English program for the student. So it, but that program, like I said, it's going to look very, very different than even Grand Island or Lexington. All of them are very, very different, depending on their numbers of students and the resources that they have available to them.
Just the bottom line is, we want to exit them from the ELL program.
That's always our goal, is to work ourselves out of a job. We are trying to exit the students. Yes, absolutely, you know. And the way that we exit is through, in Rule 15, we have exit requirements. And the, the significant piece of data that we use for exit, not the only one, is the English Language Proficiency Assessment, and that's the way OCR wants it. And that's, and we're all in alignment with that.
Pat, and then Lilly.
So is, this is an annual test, and this fee is for one-year membership?
The fees that I gave you in the sheet, that would be for one year.
Okay.
But we are looking at perhaps a three-year contract like NISA, the NISA folks do, so that we don't have to renegotiate all the time. And we would base, you know, I guess we would estimate our cost on five hundred students arriving, you know, being
Additional each year.
So in other words, we're going to sign a contract for three years at this, at this rate, or one year, and then renew?
Same rate.
Same rate.
But we, but we may have more students or fewer students, but I'm thinking more.
All right. And then is there any way to, to track these students? Are they, are some of them going to end up taking it twice or three times? And are we going to be able to track their growth and their, their proficiency or their growth in proficiency?
Right. We, the students, research would tell us that it's going to take a number of years for a student to become proficient. Usually, I, I hate to say a number, because everybody's different, but it, we're going to say, the research out there says five to seven years that it takes for so, for someone who would be a newcomer to become proficient enough in English. And remember, our goal is always to access the content standards. So we have two goals, teach the children English, make the content comprehensible to them. And as soon as they, we feel that they can meet the challenging state academic standards, that hopefully, we, and we've done studies like that, to make sure that our, when our test says they're proficient, we're, we do studies to see, are they also meeting NISA's, let's say.
And, and
And then we exit.
Assuming they take it three to five to seven years.
Could.
Who gets this data? Do, do the individual districts get the, get the information? Do we get the, who gets the information as far as how these children have progressed?
Well, the districts, the districts have their own information. But prior to ESSA, there were, there's a thing called Title III accountability. And, and we had, it was, let's just call it AYP for ELLs. But what they, what, we had two objectives. One, just the districts had to show through a calculation that we had approved by USDE, improvement each year in English proficiency. And two, increasing the number of proficient students in English. So we had those two pieces of accountability. Now, with the new law, those are going away. But my limited understanding of the new law is that we, they will be redefined through AQUEST somehow, because English language proficiency is very prominently, I, I don't know, Brian could answer this better than I, but it, but it becomes one of the three or three things that states have to be accountable for. And so it's, it's gaining a new elevation, if you will, through Title I, but it's disappearing out of Title III.
But I'm, I'm still not sure, who gets the, who gets the information or the data? Does the local school district have, have availability?
We calculate them every, every fall.
So they know that Johnny Q, who took the test last year, is doing better this year?
They get all of that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Lilly, you have a question?
It's a fabulous program. Thank you for administering it. It's so important. And when I was recently with folks from the Lincoln staff, I asked them about the numbers. They said, on average, we are adding three new students a day. Consequently, how are your numbers for working with students? Well, we're short. These classes are getting to be much bigger than they should be, but they do accommodate students. And the younger the student, when they start the program, the earlier they get out of it. And so, and yet, on the other hand, we had a student coming in to freshman year of high school in Lincoln. By the junior, senior year, took the ACT, SAT, had perfect scores on both. So you have these extremes. And that was a student who was picked up, obviously, very sharp. And so it is a, such an important program, and it's meaningful then to the families at home, because they then in turn, the children, teach the parents. So keep it up.
It's a very rewarding field.
And you're not going to work yourself out of a job, guaranteed.
When we heard that the Title III accountability was going away, we were doing a happy dance, but then I think it's going to be reinvented somewhere else. But thank you, Lilly, and I am a former ELL teacher at Lincoln Public Schools, so I thank you. Yes, they do a wonderful job.
A quick question. I wonder if maybe the permit system that we put in place might make some folks eligible to be able to be ELL teachers. It's just a question I'm putting out there, because they are desperate for people who speak anywhere from fifty to fifty-five different languages.
Or a hundred in Omaha.
Could be Omaha, a hundred.
Omaha has many, many languages.
That's right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much, again, very informative.
Best presentation I ever gave.
Yeah, this was under the commissioner's presentation, so I'm sure glad he had help.
We thought we were on for tomorrow, so.
And I started reading the agenda and went, Terry, it's today.
At least you read the agenda. We have a little, little mishap here in the agenda. So I'll go back, Commissioner, anything else under your report? And then we're going to stop back to two and then go to four.
All right.
Because we missed one under two also.
Oh, we did. How'd we do that? All right, so, well, nothing really else, except I do, I can recognize a couple of Bills in the, in the room. Bill Hyman from Waverly, I think probably here, representing stance, I'm guessing, right? And then Bill Mowenkel at ESU Eight, probably either representing ESUs generally or ESUCC, either way, so. So thanks for joining us today, so.
All right. So because we had a little glitch here in the printed copy, we skipped over item two point three, the monthly board travel expense report. You do have that in your materials, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention under item two point three. So if there's no other discussion under item two or three, now we'll try for item four and be back on track, we think. And so under four, we have four point one, discuss granting the commissioner the authority to contract with Agape. Yeah, okay. For developing the ATP caseload tracking system. Mark, thank you for being so patient with us.
No, thank you. Good afternoon. Pretty simply put, ATP has an outdated case management system, and they're looking to upgrade that, and there are some revisions that are necessary for reporting purposes. So this would allow them to work with a computer programming company to get those changes made.
What, what does this do?
What does it do?
Yes. What is, what is Agape Red?
Agape Red is a computer programming company that specializes in what's called Ruby on Rails programming language. And it's, it's what we use as a platform for our case management system. ATP has adopted the same one. They're looking to incorporate those changes in there. So they do the actual coding, is what they do. So they're not going to maintain it or anything like that. This, this is strictly to do all the coding necessary to make the changes.
Mark, it might be helpful, actually, just to give a little overview of ATP, because it might be new, it might be new to some folks, so.
Yeah, all right. Well, actually, I was a former director of ATP, so that's how old this system is, because it was there when I was still there. But ATP is the Assistant Technology Partnership, and it's a federally funded program that provides assistance around technology-related equipment and devices for people with disabilities. So to go to school, to go to work, to be able to stay in their communities, live at home independently. They do everything from voice recognition systems on computers to other electronic and adaptive AACE communication devices, particularly for children in schools, ramps, bathroom modifications allow people to get in and out of their bathroom and, and be able to live independently, so that they can then have the ability to go to work as well. So wide range of assistive technology that's included, so.
You say it's federally funded?
Federally funded. They also have additional fee for service agreements with Health and Human Services.
So are these federal funds we're using?
It's a combination of federal funds. VR is providing some funds, and HHS service fee dollars are being used to fund this.
Thank you.
Glenn?
I was just wondering, this federal program, would the other fifty states also have to have their own software, or? I was just wondering, this federal program, would the other 50 states also have to have their own software?
No, Nebraska's pretty unique in that the ATP program is about the only one that really provides direct services to individuals with disabilities. When it was first developed, it was a systems change grant. And in Nebraska, we decided that unless we were doing something really tangible to help people stay in their homes or to get jobs, it wasn't practical to take this federal money. So, we worked with a lot of the other programs, VR, HHS, that had some responsibility for that area. And they are now either contracting or provide a fee for service to actually go out there and go into people's homes or the work site and assess what's needed. And then to actually, in the case of HHS, they actually have the authority to authorize Medicaid waiver dollars to get the work done. So, it's a very unique program. Nebraska's really the only program in the, in the country that's set up like that. So, that's why they have a case management system and most other states do not.
Any other questions? Oh, Lilly?
With this case load tracking system, Addie, does it then kind of create bar graphs so you know what disabilities are rising, what is decreasing, and where they're most delivered? And if you do do that, then do you work with the, like, the ESUs to coordinate? Does it actually save money in the long run because you're tracking placement of services?
Yep, and that's exactly what some of the revisions will do, is be more specific to some of the entities that help fund. So, they produce a report, an annual report to VR, for example. It shares the information, the demographics, about who we referred, who they assisted, the kinds of services provided, the cost of those modifications, gives us a pretty good idea of what we're spending where. And when I was the director, I've used that information to go out there. For example, VR was spending a lot of money on home modifications to get people in and out of their homes so that they could get the work. There's a lot of housing money out there within community development block grant programs and HUD. And so, I went out there and we accessed those dollars to save VR dollars. The other cool thing about the program is it can combine funds across all those systems. So, whereas the Medicaid waiver program has a cap of $5,000 right now, as costs have gone up, you can't really do much for $5,000 to modify someone's home. But the combination of all these funding sources actually make it happen. So, it's a pretty cool program.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay, before we move on to item two, we're going to take a short break because we'll probably move into a longer discussion. And then we'll continue on with the agenda, and we may not take an additional break, we'll just see how it goes. But we'll take a short break right now, okay? Five minutes or so. Ready?
I thought our 15-year apart ones are almost finished.
All right, we will reconvene and move on under item four, discussion of action items. Move on to item two, discuss the selection of a vendor for strategic planning. And this, again, we're going to go through a process of discussion. I want to thank Donlin again for all the work that she's given us to read. Thank you very much. Thank you for, for our holiday reading. Yeah, holiday, holiday reading. And I want to thank both you and the Commissioner for all the work that you've done. And I just want to state, and then I'll turn it over to the Commissioner. Again, I think we have four outstanding vendors that have given us really hard decision to make. But I think all four have some tremendous strengths in what they would provide for us in Nebraska. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over first to the Commissioner, and then we'll go from there and they'll walk through the process that I think we're looking at, so.
Yeah, and I, I just want to echo what Rachel said about, first of all, the vendor's response to, in the, in the additional questions was quite helpful, and they were, you know, quite willing to do that. So, that was a lot of extra at that time. I thank Donlin additionally for the extra time she spent on that, on that overall effort. What I, and I think I'd emailed you early in the week, the notion of trying to have in mind how, how you saw the order of the vendors. I think it makes most sense that we, we should talk about which ones you saw as your, as your highest, right, first? Your, maybe your first highest? And let's have a conversation, kind of be able to sort through that. Donlin will just try to help us keep notes. If we're, if we're, as we go through the process, if it's, if it's not clear that we have some consensus around where we're at, we'll kind of just keep going, right? We'll keep talking through it and keep having a conversation. And then, you know, if we reach some type of impasse, we have kind of another couple of processes to go through. But I thought it makes most sense that we just start out with what your observations were of kind of on the top side of that. And we reviewed them in the staff arena too. And there's a lot of them that have certain strengths and certain, certain aspects that fit our work quite well. What I looked at, I was, and I, I tried to go back and review from kind of day one, how I thought about different ones, how I felt about them, which ones seemed to match that, which ones seemed to really answer the types of questions that I thought we had. And I, I'll just, I'll throw my, my first out there, I guess, for lack of better perspective. That I, I looked at FSG and I thought that they had the details of it. Now, I, I think it gives us a chance to, that they had the details. I've had, by the way, just a little bit of experience in getting a chance to work with FSG and what they've done in Nebraska. They, they provide us a little bit of additional context. I don't know, in my mind, and it's probably me from that experience, but thinking that there's some additional value in an FSG because of their experience that they've had here. And I remember when they were here, they talked a little bit about that. But I saw some of those points that I thought were really important. The other thing I, I think that I see in that company, and especially as they described the answers of what we would be doing as a department, I felt that was very, very clear, that I understood where they were going to go, what we were going to do, and how that, that work would align with what I hope to get accomplished in this phase of time. And so, I guess I kind of start there and then see what others maybe have as thoughts, so.
So, I think that's, thank you, Commissioner, as we just go through, talk about your top one. And there's no right or wrong answers. As we go through, we can go to your top two, maybe the next wave. We also, because we have some materials that weren't able to be emailed out, that you may want to look at in print copy, we also can have a discussion. And if we don't feel we have consensus today, we can wait and have the discussion again tomorrow. So, again, I think it's just important that we go through and have the discussion, what were some of the strengths and what maybe would be your top choice and why you might look at that? Or you can just say your top choice, you don't have to give a rationale. Pat will just start and go right around. So, Pat, yeah, you get to be, you get to be first.
All right. Well, first of all, thanks to Donlin for goodness sakes. That takes a lot of tenacity to do something like that. But I think, I, I agree with the Commissioner in the FSG thing because of their knowing. But I think, I agree with the Commissioner in the FSG thing because of their knowing Nebraska and having worked in Nebraska some, because as we all like to tout to everyone, we do things differently here. And I think it's important that we have that kind of a connection. And that's not saying that, you know, other people wouldn't get that, couldn't get that experience as well. But it's, I think personally, that the success of a strategic plan is looking at what you have and picking the things that you want to keep and build on that. And I think the success of a strategic plan depends a great deal on our shoulders and how we proceed. The facilitation is necessary to keep us on track, but I think we have a big responsibility as far as this process is concerned as board members.
And I too favored FSG. And I think, you know, when I looked at some of the references, which I really appreciated Don Lynn calling, getting those, putting the thoughts together, I really liked what Kerry Peterson with the Sherwood Foundation, who I really looked to as an educational resource in Nebraska, very highly recognized, who said, "They were able to do in 11 months what we had not been able to do in years." I think that speaks volumes for an organization in Nebraska that I really look towards as something wonderful for us to have. The other one was from the other reference check for FSG, where they said they were very good at asking the right questions. And I think with them having kind of a, oh, a bit of a head start with information already in Nebraska, they've already hit the road running with data and whatnot from Nebraska, I think that really helps us with them looking to us and perhaps asking the right questions if we're not, as Pat said, we have a huge burden on our shoulders to produce. But if we're not doing some things correctly, they might be able to ask the right questions. It was very hard to pick out anything from the others that really stood out to me. I think any one of them would be great, but this one stood out the most to me.
I really liked Public Works, and maybe it was a Jedi mind trick when he took me back to the Husker victory in the Orange Bowl. That really left me with a good feeling. And my note here is I wanted to hear more from them. I was impressed by their work in West Virginia and that that is still a strategic plan that everybody's referring to. And it just seemed like they had a good team. I like their low-cost approach, we're not going to charge you expenses. They just seemed like a straightforward, you know, no-nonsense outfit that would get the job done, so that's my two cents.
Well, I tried not to look at my prior ratings, and I still came out the same as far as my top one, and that was Public Works again. And I, what I liked about them, I thought their references were fine. What I really liked was that, as you looked at, although the one example they provided us was a little bit old, dating 2006 to 2011, you know, it had very measurable goals and, you know, with numbers, and it just appeared to me to have good detail, good goals, it had responsibilities isolated. I just found that to be, at least their example was the best example that I saw among all the others. I liked the others, they're all pretty, and they're all well-done. But I just kept coming back to looking at that example, and that looks to me like what I want to see us be able to do. I want to be able to set goals and quantify where we're going and know who's got the responsibility. And it also had, it measured it over a period of time, you know, so it wasn't just, here's what we're going to do and, you know, take it and run, which appeared to me to be the case with a lot of those examples. It didn't appear to me that there was much follow-up, you know, other than, here's the plan, here's your strategy, go with it. So that's what I liked about it.
I liked FSG first, education first, second.
I had a question for you. On FSG, it said it's going, oh, sorry. On FSG, it says it's going to require 10 to 20 percent of NDE staff time. Is that a concern of yours at all?
And I can't remember exactly what the, I think of a single staff person, I think.
Well, it says, "NDE staff be responsible for day-to-day questions and problem-solving, data gathering, help FSG navigate political spheres and the influence to need understood throughout the initiative, involve other stakeholders in check-ins. NDE staff will be expected to devote 10 to 20 percent of their time during the project." Were you thinking, and theirs is 19 weeks, so are you thinking?
So I think at least.
Will Don Lynn be that person?
Yeah, I mean, well, we're actually, and it kind of depends on which company we go with and how we structure that. But what I was really looking at is having a couple key staff people, having a couple, you know, key response folks as well, and using kind of the, what we have already established within the department for our team leaders and engagement through all those things. So kind of using the existing system and doing that there. That's really realistically what I think we'll have to do with any one of the vendors in some sense. And so I felt that at least there's some clarity around what that would look like. And actually, many of them did. I mean, they did a lot better once we asked them that question directly. And so I think many of them had that sense of clarity. But I felt comfortable with the.
And then one other question about FSG. Are you comfortable with, as Pat mentioned, the implementation, follow-through?
Yeah, actually, I think it's a fair point on those things where I've seen other, when I look at FSG, I think there's, we have to make sure that what we're doing is getting that follow-up. And I think they were asked in several of the other, well, someone did a nice job of asking that question each time. And so I think that's a really fair thing that we would have in the expectations of any of the vendors, what the follow-up is, what that cost would look like. I mean, and I think we're going to have to negotiate that regardless of which one, because I think that's a really strong point out of the questioning that we had before, so.
I would say if we are going to wait till decide tomorrow, we have preliminary comparison matrix. It might be nice to add just the recent additions to filter them in, since it was such a major decision.
It might be nice to include the additional information into our comparison matrix. I myself, at this point, would support FSG. I would support at this time FSG, but I would prefer waiting till tomorrow to decide when we have the comparison matrix updated.
And I would just like to say, I mean, ideally, we'll vote on this tomorrow so we can continue some discussion as necessary tomorrow. And I think that's part of, we can take as much time today to discuss, and if there's some pieces tomorrow that we need to discuss again too, I think that's perfectly fine. This is an important decision that we make as we move forward. Lilly?
My preference, after having reviewed the responses, is FSG. I was so impressed with how at their entry, their cover sheet, that they immediately started talking about how to incorporate into a quest and incorporating it in the strategic plan. As they say, "Aquest marks an exciting evolution in Nebraska's approach to assessment." I like that attitude. And one thing, as Maureen said about the Sherwood, if you notice that Sherwood's comment as well about them, the quality of their research is excellent. He also said in this that the senior partner would be there for the in-person and any other types of interview, so, which I really liked. It was very specific in regard to Sherwood, they said they are so organized, and I think that just is a huge plus. One thing, concern I had about Public Works is in their cover sheet, you know, I guess a couple pages in, they said they were unclear about the involvement of the department with the project. And I have it here if you want to read it, that they did not answer that question, they were unclear. So whereas FSG was very clear, so. Thank you.
Okay. From my view, I think, again, they were all very, very good. I tend to still be towards FSG as my first choice for some of the same reasons that have just been shared as a part of the discussion. I like the way they framed kind of their approach and their plan of action. I liked the potential of the synergy on work they've already done in Nebraska. You know, I think there's some maybe value added from that perspective, so I think that's really an important piece. I think that each, this second round of information really helped to differentiate a little bit more for me on all four of them. I think there were some things from Public Works that really rose in my view, in this, their response and some of their work samples. So again, I think all four have, certainly have, have strengths. So I guess our next step is, would you like to, I mean, talk a little bit about what your number two was and why? And see if there's some synergy? Is there thoughts around where we are in next steps? Do we want to discuss advantages and disadvantages yet of any of the four vendors?
Mine's pretty simple. I was always very impressed with Parthenon, and I think, you know, they would do just an excellent job. But when we look at the cost, just far exceeded any of the others. And I guess I would have just called it the Cadillac brand, and while I think we can get a Cadillac out of FSG or any of the others that we would choose as well, so. But yeah, I always did like Parthenon, but I felt like we had to be responsible with our money, and you know, those are important things and resources.
Lilly?
One thing about Parthenon, the cost was a huge factor for me. But on the other hand, if we thought they absolutely were the only way to go, that would be probably doable. But I don't see that there is that much gain by being with them. And it was their references that I found disappointing. They were all big references to the Gates Foundation. And I thought, where is it where you have worked with a State Department? And it's, not that they couldn't do the work, but I thought it was poor choices on their part with their references.
I was going to say, the FSG person that came and talked to us, was that in December, when the vendors were here, may have not been the best salesman they could put forward. You know, I tried to draw him out with some questions. It was like talking to teenager, yes, no, you know. I was hoping to get more information out of him. So maybe that's, you know, shaded my view of him. My second choice that I had on the matrix was the education first people. I thought they did a fine presentation and they had some good work in their resume as well, so that's just for.
I had another question in regard to FSG. The last paragraph of their data request, they wondered if they could have access either directly or through NDE to the NSSRS, Nebraska Student Staff Record System. Do, is that something that's possible?
It's actually, when, in any group that would be working with us directly, how that would actually transpire is we have protocols that we would have to follow, and most likely direct access isn't the way that that would likely work. We'd normally create a database that would be for, and that would be true for any of them, a database or information that they would be able to use based on that kind of research request piece, so.
Because you'd want to not disclose personal student information.
We can't do that with someone that's doing work on our behalf. However, the way that we would do that would be obviously very, we'd be very cautious about confidentiality and requirements of purpose, so.
Because I did notice when it talks about NDE personnel, again, I'm back to that thing about devoting the project, they, in order to be effective, they have to be able to access information. And of course, they have a high level, I imagine, of security. There's one thing no one's brought up either, and that is that FSG has worked with more than just education. I kind of like that, they're a little diversified. And it seems like they're very specific about what's going to be required from your staff. So if you're comfortable with that, you know, that makes me more comfortable as well. Thank you. Pat?
I share the opinion about Parthenon. I think they could do, they'd probably do a tremendous job and produce a great product. But I don't know how you can choose them, given the kind of costs involved. As far as the other two, other than the one I selected, which was Public Works, you know, I guess I'd have to, on the surface, my second was education first, but I'd probably like to look both of those over again overnight, just see where I'd be at on that.
Any other discussion? If not, you know, I think we have a sense that we don't necessarily have consensus, but I think we have a sense of maybe some folks wanting to take a little bit of a look again and, you know, relook at some of the materials, think through some of the materials, and then have the discussion tomorrow. Before we take any action, we can have a little bit of discussion, or we can take some action and have discussion and see where we go from there. But I do think that having that time to look again, maybe visit with Don Lynn, I don't know that it's realistic to put together some extra documents yet, but certainly, some of you may want to have some one-to-one discussions with Don Lynn and taking a look at a lot of the materials that you've reviewed or that she has, and a few of the materials that you weren't able to send. I think there was one document that didn't get through, or two.
Yeah, and there's, they're in on Laura's desk too. There's, all the vendor hard copy stuff is in on Laura's desk if you want to look at it.
So, all right. Any questions or comments, or does that seem reasonable that we'll come back to it tomorrow, take a look at some of the information again, and come back tomorrow and see if we can make a decision? All right?
Thanks, everybody, for all your extra, it was a lot of extra reading for you, so.
Thank you, Don Lynn. Actually, it was great, great information. Next, we'll move on to item five then. Thank you, Don Lynn. Thank you, Commissioner. Committee reports and other items for discussion. The first item is Aquest. Commissioner, is there anything under Aquest specifically that you want to talk about?
Well, just a quick update. Our teams are working on the priority school, reaching schools and starting to build those plans. We, over this next month, will be working pretty intensely with them. And so as we look at that, and I don't know what the right report back timeframe would be, but we'll see where we're at by February. If we have some more things that we can share with you in depth, we'll do that. Obviously, now the plan relative to those priority schools is that by August, we have their plans in front of you for your review and your ability to go ahead and, you know, approve those or not approve those or recommend different things. But we'll work closely with you. So by the time we get to August, it won't be a surprise of what's in their plans, right? So we'll work closely with you on that front. But it's really important that we build the appropriate relationships with these schools. We also have very much the mindset that in doing this work, that we're trying to support all of the needs improvement schools in particular. And it's impressive bird, level of burden, I would say, especially as we think about, it's really impacting kids' lives in schools all over the state. We know that some of the places that are facing challenges and some of the kids themselves in schools that face challenges, it's different, it's not an easy solution. But we're really, I think, energized to try to help do the right things, organize the right talent and resources and capacity to do that. And so we'll report probably back a little bit more in February. And so I'll, we'll report probably back a little bit more in February, some detail around that work.
Molly? And then Pat, sorry.
I just have two questions. The first is, when you go to the three priority schools, could you please invite the state board member that represents that district so we can have the opportunity to be present at the meeting if we're available? Because I think that shows support for their local policymakers and also, I, I think it would be good if we would be there in place or at least included in your visitation.
I'll have Dr. Freisenbecker kinda take notes. I think what we're, our first, it's probably not in our first steps on that, but as we do other things, and even me, by the way, I'm kind of taking a step back and trying to figure out when our team say, hey, look, Commissioner, we really need you here to work with a board or work with the superintendent. And so, you know, kinda with your permission, we'll engage you in that process, but we want to make sure that we're, that we're doing that well. And so we'll do that in each place.
Well, and the reason I said that is, my district has one of the priority schools and they've invited me to come. But I think it's best if we don't go alone, but we talk.
I would agree. Yeah, I would actually.
I would prefer it if we would go with staff and make sure that we are speaking the bullet points that are supportive, that are endorsed by NDE.
Yeah, and I, I would also suspect that everyone that has, I mean, I can look at three of you, I guess, almost without turning my head here and go, as we do that, if, if that's, if that's comfortable with you, we'll, we'll engage you in that, in that conversation.
And please let us know how we can support you. And then my second question is regard to ESSA. You know, in ESSA, they're requiring all states to pinpoint 5% of your schools in need of improvement. And my request is this, you had talked about basically there are four different categories of schools, and I just wondered if you have a plan maybe to use those prototypes for needs improvement to reach those 5%?
Yeah, it, it's very much, so if you look at our needs improvement overall, that's roughly 8% or 9% that we were at in needs improvement. And so it, it fits well within that category right now, but it's an important part of serving all of those schools in needs improvement.
Just, just a clarification. Have you had any, any contact with the superintendents of these three schools?
Yeah, in, in all cases, we've done that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Maureen?
So would it be my understanding that the NDE team or some from NDE will be making an initial visit to these three priority schools in January?
Yeah, I think we were just working on that yesterday, so I believe that's right. I looked back to get the nod, yes, so.
Yeah, okay.
Any other? Oh, John?
One other issue. I was, had the opportunity to speak with Mark Evans at OPS, and they're really anxious to join up with their staff with NDE in regards to getting the, the process rolling. It looks like that everybody knows it's gonna be a co-op effort.
Yeah, and I, you know, with Mark and with OPS and with, with the, all the other schools as well, I mean, I think, I mean, it's a challenge. I mean, it's a challenge for them to be in this position. And what we're trying to do is really make sure that, you know, that ultimately the improvement of those places are what we're looking for, right? And so we're trying to find the appropriate way that we interact and do that. And you use the resources and efforts that they already have underway to, to learn from that too. So we go in somewhat humble in, in that, but we also with a theory and a plan of what we think, think logically should take place.
Molly?
Just one additional note. Would you please also be in touch with the ESU coordinating council to make sure we're utilizing the ESUs that are involved in those priority areas?
Yeah, and that's actually, it's a great point. As we look at this and start having conversations around where we organize our time and we, by rule, through Rule 84, we do two joint planning efforts a year with the ESUCC and the Department of Education. And this is actually all data, including from EBA, that helps inform what schools need what services. And I'm, I'm actually quite anxious to be able to dive into that, that information, that work with the ESUs because we're gonna need that capacity to really serve schools across the state.
Any other questions or comments on AQUEST? Hearing none, we'll move on to item two, teaching and learning. Are there any reports, Commissioner, under the domain of teaching and learning today?
I don't believe that we do have any, so I think.
All right. Then let's.
I, I looked around to make sure.
Moving on to item three, which is student success and access. And in this area, we have a report under the Positive Partnerships, Relationships, and Student Success. So I'll turn it over to the Commissioner and to Molly on the Presentation of Recommended Standards for School Security. So I don't know, Commissioner or Molly?
Yeah, and, do we have our team in here? We do. And I'll let Molly do a little more introduction. By state statute, by law, we were to organize the, the recommendation for standards of, for school security. Jolene Palmer is coming up as leading that effort for us and at the department. It was a requirement of law, by the way, that we get this presented to the board by, right now, January 2016. You don't have to take action on this, but, and it never necessarily says that the board has to quote-unquote adopt these standards. But this is our first step in that process, and I believe Jolene had presented to the committee before, so I'll let Molly take it from there, so.
I'd like you all to bring up your external file on your drive. If you can open it, it's called the Prevention Standard. Do you all have access to that? And if you go to, I, I just wanted to highlight one thing on, I think that you've done an excellent job in NDE to talk about school safety. But I did want to say, on SS 1.4, can you bring that up on the overhead?
Print it right up here right now, so maybe.
Yeah.
Maybe in a minute.
Maybe in a minute. Well, anyway, it's SS 1.4, the school system shall have processes in place to assist and address identified individuals who exhibit signs of risky, harmful, or violent behaviors and oppose the threat of committing criminal activity. In light of what's going on in our nation today, I think we see that reflected in our states and in our local districts. And I think Nebraska has done a good job in delineating A through F about problem-solving intervention strategies. These all are related to behavioral health as well, behavioral assessment. And it's really about prevention of crime instead of catching it on the tail end and coordinating with mental health resources. And that, we've talked about the, the rule for suicide prevention and then the bullying policy. And I did visit, and there's about dating violence as well. I did talk with the Commissioner and Lilly about possibly adding one more component. And Jolene, I haven't talked with you about this, but in E you have including digital citizenship for cyberbullying. I think it's really important possibly to have this as a G component, just digital, the school system shall have a, a policy in place regarding digital citizenship. In my five years on the board, it seems that this is something repeatedly we get, not just notice of students that don't understand digital citizenship, but even some of our employees. And I think it might be very proactive, but not an overreach of state power. If we really shed this as a separate component of safety, I think digital citizenship, starting early, I think a lot of kids don't realize those phones. Those aren't just private little things like handing a note. If you take a picture of yourself and share it with someone, there are implications that not just take place today, but maybe for your whole life. When we went, those of us that went to NASB meetings, our local education association is saying digital citizenship is, is a 21st century issue. And I don't think our policies have really, I know, I know that Lilly said we should check what we have in place for digital citizenship. But I don't even think, sometimes our employees realize, if you transfer a picture of yourself to someone else, that can get you into trouble. And that's where it is committing criminal activity. There was, there was a school system, their whole football team was removed from eligibility because they were, I don't know, it's called sexual offenders, and they were on the list. And, and that's, those are felonies. I mean, these are jokes. And so, and I'm talking about posing threat of committing criminal activity. I think early on, we need to talk about digital citizenship and safety because there are predators on the web and students themselves get involved in illegal activities. So that's my only little aside, but I, I think we have to have the courage to listen to our school districts, and digital citizenship is something that we're missing some links. So thank you.
So I think the intent is to do a presentation.
Correct.
And then we'll come back to discussion and comments after the presentation. So Jolene, if you wanna move forward with your presentation, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Brent, are we able to? So good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to let us come and share this information with you. I just want you to know that the folks you will hear from today are part of the committee that has worked on this, and I want to introduce them now so that between each presentation or each person that they're, they don't have to be introduced, et cetera, et cetera. So representing Millard Ezra Elementary School is a kindergarten teacher, is Megan Christensen. To my right here is, you know, Jay Sears of NSEA. And then we have Caroline Winchester, which is the superintendent at Shadrin Public Schools. We have Joe Wright, which is the director of security with the Lincoln Public Schools. We have Megan Bolt, which is the director of alley cap and insurance with NASB. And I guess I already have Jay. So, oh, and Adam DeBilzen, which is a second grader, grade teacher, a second grader.
I know I'm his second grade, yes.
Poor guy. He sure is tall for a second grader, I can tell you that. And I have never seen a second grader girl goatee, but.
That's pretty good.
I'm, I'm impressed.
And he has a parking permit and everything, isn't he?
Yeah, that's right. But anyway, he's a second grade teacher at Northside Elementary School in Nebraska City. So these are the folks that have helped me, and I'm gonna turn it all over to them.
And I have the slide that's about the legislation. Can you believe that? In the 103rd Legislative Session, the second session of the 103rd Legislative Session, LB 923 was passed, and it had a number of provisions, but for the purposes of today, they're really about the department and the Commissioner appointing a state school security director. And as you know, she's sitting right next to us and a fabulous choice, if I may say so personally. And there were all kinds of directions in that legislation about what Jolene's duties were going to be, and I, and she still took the job. But I think she's one of the best prepared people for it. She was to provide leadership and support for safety and security for our public schools and to recommend minimum standards, and we put quotes around minimum because most of our standards are minimum, for school security and present them to the State Board in January of 2016, and that's what we're doing. And then part of that legislation also said that the State Board may adopt and promulgate rules and regulations based on those recommendations by the state school's security director honored before July 1st, 2016. And so that's why we're before you and why Megan's gonna tell you how we did it.
All right, so the selection of the committee, some people were self-selected. They chose to volunteer for the committee. Others were recommended by individuals, and the nature of their position happened to leave them a part of the committee. So it was a collaborative group of educators, law enforcement, emergency responders from across the state. We had rural and urban schools represented and a variety of elementary, secondary, high school teachers that were both general and education and special education teachers as well. And we had local and state law enforcement. We have the state fire marshal there. We had architects, district technology coordinators for that cyberbullying piece of it, state agency representation, and the ESUs. And when we think about this, there were 37 people on our committee, very diverse people, as you can tell, really working together, and that was huge, that we all were working for the same purpose, and it was, it was a great experience.
Just to kinda go through the process and, and the development, we first met as a group in February 2015. There were 31 individuals at that first meeting. And at that point, the things that we discussed, we went through other state standards. Texas stuck out a lot, theirs was very complex. We also looked at Virginia's, Indiana's, there was a variety, and we kinda passed them around that day. We also made a list of must haves. And so we went around the room. This was the most lengthy portion, I would say, of what we did. And, you know, having that variety of perspectives at the table, everyone had something else that they were passionate about, but they all made it onto the list and kept it, you know, really, we all stayed open to it and, and made that must haves list. We brainstormed ideas and identified other people that we thought of from that first meeting. Who could, who else could we add that could add some input? And so going forward to the next meetings, we met again in March, April, and May, total of eight days. We had 37 individuals total that came together. We broke into four different groups, so prevention, preparedness, response, and recovery. And as funny as it was, we all just kinda fell into those areas, you know? I, I was on the prevention side, but there were others that just naturally flocked to those groups that they had their passions with. And we developed some standards and indicators. We stayed focused on, you know, trying to make sure that we weren't putting big, high-budget items into these, but rather looking for a way we could, can, can have consistency amongst the districts. We saw really great things or heard of great things that were happening at some of the districts we had seen, but knew it wasn't happening at every district. And so that's kinda try, what our focus was, we tried to implement that into the standards. We identified after those meetings in March, April, and May, a detailers group, a smaller group that came out of that group of 37. So that's why you don't have 37 people sitting here today in your room, but rather the handful of us that are here. But we met again four different days in the end of May and kinda went through the standards, the big document, and said, okay, where can we spell check? Where can we correct things? Where can we look for consistency so that the document reads from beginning to end smoothly and, and there aren't, aren't gonna be a bunch of questions after someone sees this document? And so after that process, as a group, Jolene took this on too, and, and we were invited to as, as committee members to share it with people we knew in our realm of work. And then also had some outside groups look at it, and they're listed there. But we looked for feedback. We asked for suggestions. We asked for additional input, and those items all went back to Jolene and, and were implemented at that point as well. So it didn't just stop at us 37. It definitely was far-reaching after that point too. But that's kinda how we got to where we are today.
Adam?
I'd like to point out that I'm in fact a second grade teacher, not a second grader, but thank you. The first category that we started with was prevention, and without going into lengthy detail on any of these, prevention is about preventing the events, particularly the ones that we can control. There's obviously weather and just a large list of things that we aren't able to control, but the ones that we can, we started with that, with the ones we could prevent. On the list, I'll just cover a couple of them that are important. Coordinated prevention efforts with stakeholders is going to be important, making sure that we are able to communicate with everybody in our community, in our district, making sure that we're all on the same page throughout the school year. Having safety teams started in our schools and making sure that they meet regularly is obviously very important. And then I'll skip down to visitor protocols. That's been a very, been a very big issue, making sure that people are checking in correctly and even parents, it goes to making sure they have background checks and things like that. So prevention, very, very big. Second was preparedness, and that is making sure that we can limit the amount of casualties, destruction, and chaos when an event would occur. Hopefully it doesn't, but it does happen. First, we need to make sure we plan safety and security consistent with the incident command and that we integrate the needs of persons with and without disabilities. We had a lengthy, lengthy discussion about that. That was why it was so nice to have a diverse group and have people have worked with students with disabilities to voice that opinion about some of the schools that we have right now that are, that do not help out those students. And we'll go down to ensure all facilities are code compliant. There are several schools in this state that I believe are maybe not there. I maybe have not been to them, but I've heard stories. And last is create a positive climate, and that goes along what we've already discussed today with the bullying and cyberbullying and the digital citizenship even. And so preparedness is obviously very important as well. Thank you.
The next group, as you might imagine, felt all the ex-cops in the room to look at response, mainly because it's the, probably the simplest and most straightforward if you, if you look at the number of, of items we have. Everyone's used to response, they're familiar with it. Everyone needs something to, a plan. Everyone needs something to, a plan when an incident happens. We're all used to thinking about things like that. The heavy lifting was really what, what we just talked about before. And after response came the recovery, which brings us back, the things we need to bring us back to where we really want to be, the climate and culture where we want to be. And if you think of these four items, instead of maybe a linear list, as more of a cycle, I think you can see some of those recovery items even taking on that post-vention or really prevention characteristics, so you're really coming back around again. And I think we felt really comfortable because where we ended up with this is really back to kind of where we started, so it made a lot of sense to us when we were done.
Okay, I'm going to talk a little bit about the rubric. Do you want to, can you bring a rubric up and just kind of, because there are pieces to that? And if you look at the rubric, it follows much the same format that we use for advanced ed for school improvement, and we thought that that would be very helpful. It's a format that school districts are familiar with and have worked with in, in the past. And so, there's some nice pieces to that. I think one piece about it, too, it, it provides local control for the school districts so they can kind of make their own decisions about the level of implementation and kind of give them a framework then for, for planning to the future and what they, what they'd like to do. I think, like with school improvement, it's a growth model because we, we want to be continuously improving, and so, this gives you a, a framework for that. And it, it, you know, gives us the higher levels of practice, and I think a, a, a big component of the school improvement process and advanced ed is prior to an external visit, you do a self-assessment piece. And this rubric is, you know, detailed enough and enables school districts to be able to self-assess themselves as to what particular level they are. And from my experience in school improvement, that's one of the, the biggest pieces to getting school improvement, is when people sit down and have those discussions about where we are and where we want to go. And so, I think that provides a big piece for it. I think I, I talk about differentiation, you know, because when we teach students, you know, they're all at different levels when we come in, and same way when we provide staff development for staff, they're all at different levels. And school districts are going to be at different levels or have, have different needs because we have very unique school districts throughout the state that have very unique needs. For instance, Omaha Public Schools, they need metal detectors perhaps at certain events because of, because of situations they have. At Shadrin, we have the college across the street from us, so that has differing security needs for us that have a higher priority than maybe for other school districts. So, I think that this rubric allows that kind of flexibility with it. We provided examples for evidence, and this probably was one of the things, as the superintendent, I don't want to reinvent the wheel. We, if you look through this, there's a number of this, a majority of this is already in state statute. It's already in Rule 10. And to let school districts know, you're already doing these things, you know? And so, this isn't anything new. We're not adding a whole lot of new things on to your plate. We're just kind of putting everything, maybe all in, in one place instead of, you know, this is over here in Rule 10, and this is in state statute and so forth. So, that helps. And also then, also you notice at the bottom, there's example of, examples of evidence that, you know, you know that you're reaching the standard or whatever. I think that's very helpful for districts. I know for I, myself, some of the evidence that, oh, you know, that's something we need to do, or, 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 you know, oh, that's something we're already doing. We can pat ourselves on the back. So, that just gives you, I think there's just, the, the format, I think, is user-friendly, and I think, very importantly, will help us move forward as our safety and security for our school districts.
And the last piece that I would share with you is part of that same LB was that we will conduct security assessments in every building across the state, which now, thanks to AQuest, we know we have 1,130 of them. These standards are actually going to drive that process in that we're going to, that assessment is going to look very similar to the advanced ed process. So, using this rubric, we're going to first let schools do their own self-assessment, and then we will have somebody go in and validate that assessment. Because when we really start looking at what we want out of the assessment, we want to increase the safety and security in schools. And we believe schools are very capable of doing that themselves. We believe schools will be much more compliant or more ready to address some of the needs and changes if they get to tell themselves and see their own gaps rather than having somebody come in and saying, this is wrong, this is wrong, this is wrong. So, we're going to let them first self-assess based on this rubric, and then go in and validate that and determine the needs together so that we can help them develop a plan then as far as where they want to go forward. So, that's how we're also going to take care of that, that piece in that LB for assessments. Thoughts, questions, wonders? And this is for the whole committee.
Yeah, we'll go Maureen and then Glenn, okay? I'll get, then Loli.
The gal, blond-haired gal that talked about.
Megan.
Megan.
Megan B.
When you talked about the detailers group, when you broke that down, you said you took, you took it out to other groups to find what you might have been missing and whatnot. And I, and it's just a inquiry here, curious. I think you have a very well-detailed piece that you put together. What, did, 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 were there a lot of holes as such? Did those outside groups find a lot of things to help you incorporate into the plan?
I might look to Jolene to answer that, actually.
I would say they validated it more than anything.
Okay.
I shared it with my colleagues at the state school security director level, and they were able to throw in some ideas that helped formulate or form some of the pieces. But for the most part, the, the rest of the comments had a lot to do with, what's this mean exactly? And that was helpful. Or if, if I have to do this, we don't think we can do this. So, what's our, so it was an opportunity to answer some questions and get some clarification so that we could clarify the document a little more.
Well, I just want you to know that the committee has just done an extraordinary job on this.
They were a phenomenal committee to work with.
Wonderful.
And we had some fun.
That's, if you.
You don't have some fun minutes.
You know, and I, I have to go back and say it was fun because there were a lot of different entities sitting at that table. Lot of different walks of life with backgrounds. And the first day we got together, we did a little bit of backgrounding, and when Megan said we shared our passions and why we actually were sitting at that table, it took forever. But you know what? That was probably the most important piece we did because it gave us all the understanding of where we all were coming from. And from there, we just took off and ran. And as, as Caroline said earlier, we had to walk in order to run. And we, that, it took some time, but it was beneficial.
Glenn, and then Loli.
So, Standard 4 says, "The school system shall have processes in place to assist and address identified individuals who exhibit signs of risky, harmful, or violent behaviors and/or pose a threat of committing criminal activity." Well, I mean, this sounds like a good thing. I mean, if we could figure out who the bad guys were before they did anything wrong and stopped them, that would be great. However, my concern is, what about the person who hasn't actually committed any criminal activity, and they somehow get profiled as somebody that's going to commit criminal activity? How do we protect individuals if we're going to arrest or, I don't, intervene before they actually do something bad?
Joe will address this one.
It's a two-part question, Joe. The, the second part is, and if we don't catch that person and they do commit a violent act, is the school somehow liable for not doing due diligence under Standard 4? It's, this seems very confusing to me.
There's a, a general term called threat assessment, or threat management, or behavioral threat assessment, which some people are aware of. The state of Virginia actually is the first state that has mandated that every school have a threat assessment team. So, I think we're looking down that, that viewpoint, that we need to create and establish access, and, and we have a lot more than you might think. Dr. Mario Sklor at the University of Nebraska at Lincoln is probably one of the leaders in the, in the world, in the area, and there's a lot going on, hubbed, hubbed in Nebraska, actually. But I think we can count on our schools becoming competent at, at an, an expected level of having some type of behavioral threat assessment expertise that understands that people can be involved in grievance-driven directed violence and know what those cues are so that we can, at a, more than a common sense level, but less, less than an expert level, react to those cues and those behaviors appropriately. And that expertise exists, and I think it can travel across the state into our schools pretty quickly, actually.
My goal and my hope is that we develop a cadre of some folks that can work statewide through our ESUs to do just those kinds of things, some helping schools develop behavioral threat assessment pieces. I want to work with school secretaries because they're the first people in the building that usually are sacrificial lambs. They need to know, they need to know body language. They need to know cues, like Joe's talking. When somebody approaches the door, what do I do with them if I'm uncomfortable? So, there, there are a lot of things that we can do that is over a term or a process. I, I would like to see it over a seven-year process to build the capacity at our building levels to do some of that.
Loli?
Joe, thank you for your work. And I think I have passions, so I want to list my passions. I'll make it quick because I know these are things that Lincoln Public Schools are doing and seem to me like they're minimals that should be done. There should be some practice that schools do for evacuations, fires, some threats of any kind. Students ought to be wearing an ID, which they do here in town. Those have proven to be very beneficial. You should know what the response time is from the fire department because at one point, Lincoln, with the addition of the two newer high schools, it was an additional few minutes to get to, to the schools. And that's been corrected finally with the bond for the fire department. I think you need to have a system where you contact the parents, know immediately what is going on, that you have in place. I would hope that that's done statewide. And lastly, I think the value of the door monitors, people who are there checking in see the IDs, they know immediately who belongs in the school, who doesn't, and are the first source, actually before the school secretary. That monitor catches some first, so, and it's very helpful.
And all of those are actually addressed in the rubric?
Yes. Okay, those are my passions, and I'm glad that they're in there.
And that's really the point and the purpose of the rubric is to further explain what is intended with each one of the standards. The standards, if you look at them by themselves, are pretty vague and pretty.
Well, that's what I see, yeah.
But the rubric, and that again, is what's going to guide our assessment. Visitor protocol is huge. Package intake is huge. Food intake is huge. And so, those kinds of protocols need to be established in, there in here.
And those didn't occur in Lincoln schools just overnight. Those were probably something that took the seven years, like you're saying.
It's a process.
May have to happen statewide, but these are just basics, it seems to me.
Yep.
Thank you for your work and for the safety of the kids.
Molly, then Maureen.
As chairman of the Positive Partnership Tenet, I loved your presentation. I mean, really, talk about bringing people from diverse backgrounds together to do what's best for kids, and all across the state, too. Awesome. And I was going to point back to my introductory comments that relate to your rubric. It's 2.6C. "School systems should create a positive climate that encourages respect and responsibility in regards to at least the following: dating violence, bullying, cyberbullying, digital citizenship, and sexual harassment." I, I do think that the answer is in that positive climate, and it's local control of what that looks like. But Megan, you probably could support me on that, that that is, the topic about digital citizenship is huge when it is involved, not just the climate at school, but what they carry in their pockets and on the playground, and what they go after school, before school. So, in your great knowledge, I hope digital citizenship does have, play an important role, not just the education of safety kids, but also your employees. I, I, I can't tell you how many futures I've seen dashed because even grownups don't always know about digital citizenship. So, thank you. I know some people say to me, why should safety be a component of what the State Board of Education concerns herself? I don't think you can learn if you don't feel safe. And in fact, when we've done analytics on our NISA test scores, they say students that suffer, it's kind of like post-traumatic stress. If they have violence in their neighborhood or home, they are less likely to perform well on academic subjects. So, I, you talk about hot, hotspots. I am all about safety in schools, but more than just safety in the school, it's training that civic responsibility to our students so when they leave, they can behave in a manner where they're safe at home, too. Thank you.
There'd be a man, a gentleman by the name of Maslow, that would tell you the same thing, that a student has to feel safe before they can ever learn. And so, I, I keep smiling at Dr. Bloomstead when we talk about AQuest and say, we got to remember safety because that, that really does come first, just as important.
Maureen?
Is it possible to get an electronic copy of the, the rubrics that you sent out?
It should be there, I think.
Their honor.
We have.
But if not, I can see that you get one. Yes, we can get you the PowerPoint.
Yeah, we can get the PowerPoint. John?
Thank you very much. I found it interesting, in the new Every Student Success Act, there was quite a bit of emphasis in regards to security and safety for students. At the point of, besides emphasis, added funding now for security. Have you got any wind of this?
Yes. I will find out more about that in the beginning of February. The National Institute of Justice is bringing all of the state security directors together, and they're going to share some of that information. So, I'll know more. In my conference calls that I've been on, the NDOE or the USDOE folks are saying they're trying to work their way through to find out what it all says. I work very closely with the REMS TA Center, the Readiness and Emergency Management for Schools. They're part of that, and so, they're all saying, we're working our way through the, the new and find out exactly what that means for us. And yes, they did say this last conference call, that there was some money attached to that, which I'm excited about because I have goals, and I think.
I would call them ambitions, really.
Determinations, that I want to build a system across the state and Nebraska so that we have the capacity at our local level for schools to be able to develop safety and standard, safety and security within their schools.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Just, what, if any, contact have you had with Nebraska's Homeland Security Office on this, on developing this and working with them?
We have. I've, I've sat down and worked with them. In fact, I also am going to pull a meeting together in the next couple of weeks with some of the state agencies who are working this as well, and actually start looking at some pieces that we all can play together in. I've sat down with Greg Hollings, Hollingsworth, which is our Department of Homeland Security person, and we've had him come and talk to some of our assessors and try to, to help move us in the right direction. So, we're talking.
It just seems that that, that would be a natural and a very important part of the whole process.
Yep.
Okay.
So, we're going to have Department of Homeland Security, we're going to have NEMA, we're going to have the State Patrol Fusion Center, those folks who have an interest in school safety. I'm bringing them to the table, and we're going to sit down and we're going to talk about what we need to do and how we have the same message statewide so that we don't have schools having a bazillion different messages. It's, it's about building a system and consistency across the state so that we're all working in the same way. In the same respect, I, I will tell you that I've been working with the State Patrol, who also has been working with Sarpy County and the local police departments in developing a. a standard response protocol for the state of Nebraska. When I talked not too long ago to a group of superintendents, I said, how many of you today, tomorrow, or the next day will have students from your building in another building, somewhere in the state? And every hand in the room went up. There were like 75 people there, 75 superintendents. And I said, and when they are in another building, who's responsible for those students when they're in their building or in that building? And each one of them said their home district. And then my next question was, how many of you are absolutely sure that your students would know what to do if something went down in that school? And every hand went down. Maybe one or two stayed up. So we need to develop a common language. And so we're at the table talking to develop, or not develop, to adopt a standard response protocol in the state of Nebraska. Law enforcement has actually taken the lead in that, in that they have worked with I Love You Guys out of Colorado to implement statewide the law enforcement response to emergency situation in schools and businesses. And so we're following in that lead and partnering with them to move that throughout our state. So we'll be sending some folks this summer that is that part of that cadre that I want to develop to get them trained so that we can start training schools through our ESUs to do that.
I'm glad to hear that. I guess I was kind of reminded of that as I saw my friend Tom Nesbit back there, who was the former head of the State Patrol. So, but I think it's really important to build that relationship and make sure that they're seeing everything that you've done here and have some input into that. Thank you.
Did you also look at the needs on the Native American schools? Have you discussed that? I mean, FBI needs to be on your list.
We haven't.
Because the school superintendents went to meeting, Dr. Freyson was there a month or six weeks ago, and they really have a unique challenge around response that needs to be addressed because of the unique nature of the reservation schools.
So, yes, I did. Now that you remind me what it is. Yes, I did. And the response was, in the immediate, the State Patrol or county would actually respond. As the investigative piece that would come in afterwards to do the response or the recovery piece of that, that's when the Native American tribe, tribal police and the FBI would take over to do the investigation.
Yeah, if that's been kind of written up as a protocol and sent out to those schools, I think that would be really helpful. And I'd appreciate seeing it. So if a question comes back up, I at least have an idea how to respond.
My hope is, again, when we get that cadre, that we'll actually have those folks being the initiators of some of those meetings in those places to get law enforcement folks together, EMS people together, school people together. That's one of my big hopes, is that they will be the initiators to have some of those conversations so that we're not caught in limbo.
Right.
So it's really about, again, it's really about developing that systematic piece across the state.
Sounds good. Any other questions? Molly?
Before you came in, we were discussing about the whole child, the talk with Nebraska Association of School Boards and the social, emotional wellness and safety of children. And it kind of goes into the first two categories, both the prevention and then also what's happening on a day-to-day basis in your, in your school buildings. But in regard to that, many policymakers, teachers are saying that there's a woeful need for greater social, emotional support in schools. And I don't know if that's part of your safety plan, but we heard, I've heard from teachers that they, their guidance counselor can't handle these socially-emotional problems of young people. Sometimes they cost a lot of money later if they have the blowups, like you say, if something happens and you have to deal with all the social-emotional recovery. But are you really emphasizing social-emotional wellness early? And are you trying to build better systems to support for schools, to have more people in place to be proactive?
More people.
Train people because they're saying there's a shortage of people that go into, I guess, social-emotional health for schools.
The best school safety and security that we can offer are strong relationships between students and staff, staff and students. That's where I feel the social and emotional piece from our safety aspect comes, in that we want schools to really have those processes in place to build relationships. In fact, we followed, again, Advanced Ed lead in that we want schools to have a process in their school to designate or identify an adult advocate for every child in their school. So that is my strength, that is my belief, is that our best school safety and security comes from relationships and building relationships. Because if I'm struggling and something's happening, I need someplace, an outlet to go, to talk to somebody.
It's like Columbine and Sandy Hook don't happen overnight.
Right. Right. And the FBI released a report last, about a year ago, that identified that 85% of all middle school and high school attackers were students in the building. So we're missing the boat somewhere, and we have to build those relationships. And it goes back to that behavioral assessment. Will we catch everybody? I would hope so, but I would also tell you, there's never a guarantee. It's just like, do we have our State Patrol catching every speeder? No. But you keep working toward identifying your threats, your concerns. I learned from Mario Scolara that Joe spoke about, that all behavior is safety, or all safety is behavior-related. And so we got to go back to build those relationships so that we can make those connections in schools. That's our best defense.
Thank you, Jolene. Commissioner, did you have?
No, I just, I appreciate Jolene's work on all this and a lot more work. And it ties together with a lot of other components, as you can see. And so I appreciate the efforts of that and the whole committee, everyone that was here today.
The committee did a fabulous job.
Yeah, so thank you very much.
They really did.
Thank you, and thanks to all of the committee that was here. Next, we'll move on to item four, which is legislation. And I'm going to have Brian Halsted come up and talk a little bit about our legislative retreat and the State Board reception with senators.
Good afternoon, Brian Halsted, Chief of Staff. I can report to you, two days down, only 58 more days to go in the 104th Legislature Second Session. So in that regard, they have already started. They have already started with bill introductions. Staff have already been assigned to start doing bill analysis, so we've been working on that as we go. What I did attach under here, under your retreat are two documents. One is the legislative calendar that the Speaker has posted, so if you want to know when their meeting and all of those dates, that is there. I also attached the bills from last session that you took positions on that were not acted upon and have been carried over into this session. There are a few still there. Most of them, I believe, are still in committee in that regard, but that's just for your information. The process we follow, if you don't remember, is bills are assigned, staff do an analysis. We try to compile that, put that together so that you have information about what we think are bills that impact education or the Nebraska Department of Education. We'll try to focus and get to you the ones we think are going to be the bills that you should be looking at. There are a whole number every year. I think you're all well aware that this session is only 60 days, and when the legislature left last session, the revenue forecast did not go up, it went down. So they're having already to address issues with what the biennial budget they adopted. So that's an ongoing activity. That probably will be one of the major focuses. For your information, the next time the forecasting board meets is the last of February, when they'll set the numbers for the rest of the forecast for revenue. So that will be a critical thing for appropriations, revenue, and all the other activities over there. We are having a reception for senators on the 25th. It starts at 5 o'clock, hoping that they're done with their committee meetings at the Cornhusker. We've invited all of the senators. We have 17 who say they are coming so far. There are about 20 we haven't heard from yet, but they're starting to trickle in. So it looks like we may have a very good turnout. It is not a meal, it's just a reception. So we'll be working, I think the Commissioner and the President will probably do a short address to them as to some of the big issues and get feedback. It's more of a dialogue that we're planning on. So that's kind of where we're at at the moment and where we hope to be going, but I'll take any questions you might have.
Any questions for Brian? All right. Thank you. Moving on to item five, which is teacher principal evaluation. Molly, do you have the report?
We had a hefty discussion this morning, and I really want to thank Maureen and Pat and Lilly and then all the NDE staff that participated. We, and Donlin, we have great, great plans right now. You all know that we have 17 schools that are pilot schools for the evaluations, and most are based on either Marzano or Danielson in these 17 school districts. The evaluation systems are using are in alignment with Nebraska Teacher Principal Framework, performance framework. The framework we passed in 2011, and it was noted by Sharon Cott that on the national level, they have updated the in-task standards for administrators. So before the next meeting, Donlin and her team are going to be looking about suggestions to update the Nebraska Teacher Principal Framework. And then we have school districts, not just the 17 that are in the pilot projects, that are actually, I won't say begging, but they're very anxious to see what the model is and the secret website with all the suggestions for rubrics to help. So I liked it earlier, all of my other three colleagues said, the sooner the better, get it out. And I think we want to make sure that it's, I guess, ready for open source. And in January, right now, they're going to start working on this. And in February, we'll have a timeline when this will be released. And we're thinking that next year, the school year 2016 to 17, can be a time where school districts can access our models, and then they can make some modifications. And in the timeline that will be determined whether the next year then, the models will be out for distribution so people can use them. And again, evaluations, Maureen brought this point up, are not to be used just to get rid of undesirable teachers. They're actually supposed to be evaluation models that support what you're doing right and improves teachers in place. I remember when Roger Breed said, we don't have a whole truckload of new teachers coming in wanting to jump in place. So we are going to be trying to integrate the teacher evaluation system with the AQUEST Tenet on teacher evaluation, and it comes back to making our teachers and principals more effective. And in that effective goal, it does include that our teachers have a time for self-reflection. Kind of, kind of goes back to what they were saying about the district can first reflect on what they're doing themselves. And that's the goal of our teacher principal evaluations, that it's a way to build best practices. So heads up for next, next month, we're going to have revised frameworks, hopefully, and we'll also be resubmitting it to the leadership teams that have been working on the teacher principal evaluation models before it is open source. And I think Pat said, we better get this out as soon as possible, and Lilly said, May 1st. So the board is all encouraging us to get out early, and I hope that our superintendents and different groups of school administrators would appreciate this as well. So we are proceeding.
Thanks, Molly. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to item six, competency-based education. Glenn Flitt?
Well, we have been very busy over on competency-based education. I just wanted to congratulate the members of the committee on all their hard work. Pat, Tim, John Whitzel, Rachel Wise, Cory Epler, Janine Thiel, Ryan For, Katie Graham, who is having a baby, but will be back soon, I guess, Rich Cott. Okay. And I have Cory and Ryan and Janine here to back me up on what I'm going to say here. Help me out. Come on up. You know, our motto here is every student, every day, and competency-based education is all about that. We want to have personalized learning. We've been working a lot, trying to come up with definitions. We've been touring schools in Iowa and here in Nebraska that are using some of the competency-based education models. And what we've, what we've learned is that the traditional model is the time is constant and the learning varies. And with competency-based education, the learning is constant, but the time may vary. And one of the key things that helps drive this is digital learning resources because they can be tailored to the student, they can find out where the student needs help, they're tireless, they'll continue to work with the student as they work through that. One of the things that we are recommending is that the State Board of Education, Department of Education, build a digital repository of resources that could be used by all the teachers and students in the state to help with this sort of thing. It would be a curated collection of digital learning objects for the students. The other thing that we're working on is a competency-based exploratory cohort where we're going to very soon invite schools to join us and learn more about competency-based education and participate in a collaborative work. And I'm going to turn it over now to Cory and his crew.
Yeah, well, I think the conversations, as we think about competency-based education, really gets at personalized learning for students, and that's what we keep going back to. And I wanted to invite Ryan and Janine to share with you a little bit about the work. They've really pulled most of the weight in as far as NDE's perspective on this work. So I asked Brian to talk through a few pieces, especially talking more about this cohort and the opportunity that's going to be available to schools as they think about the implementation of competency-based education.
So when we started this project, it became quickly apparent that competency-based education is a big animal, and it's a big concept to wrap our minds around. And Glenn mentioned initiating this cohort. And so initially, we thought we would roll this out next year and let schools try on competency-based education. And as we researched more and learned more about it, we realized quickly that we wanted to do this right. And we wanted to make sure that we were setting schools up for success, but more importantly, setting students up for success in trying this out. We know that there's schools in Nebraska who are trying elements or practices related to competency-based education, but we don't know that there's many schools who are fully implemented with competency-based education. And so earlier this fall, we sent a survey out to all Nebraska school administrators. And we had an over 25% response rate in that survey, which is pretty good for no incentive and for an electronic survey. And what we learned from that is that there is interest among school administrators in this state on this notion of competency-based education. We also realized through that survey that there is, there are varying degrees about what the interpretation or what is in people's minds about what competency-based ed is. And so we've been working diligently over the last few months to put a plan together that will ultimately lead to us providing a framework or some guidelines for local schools to implement competency-based education practices in buildings and in districts. And so Glenn mentioned putting together a cohort. And so what we'll do soon is release a very relatively simple application to schools to see what schools might be interested in engaging in, in this cohort or this exploratory project that could be up to a four-year project, where the next year would be a professional learning experience for those schools. And so our staff will work with those schools who are interested and selected to engage in professional development or professional learning about competency-based education to learn what's going to work for them and what's going to work in Nebraska. And then a year after... And then a year after that, then, the thought is that they would begin implementing these practices in their local schools, and we would support the professional learning that happens through that and get feedback through them in that process, potentially continuing that process for up to three years. The reason we chose three years is because I don't know what we can learn after one year, and that three years really gives us some triangulation and putting some solid practices and recommendations together. And so then, through constant contact with them, with those participating schools, and through some reflection and evaluation of how it's going, our goal is then to put together a suggested framework or guidelines for how this can work in Nebraska schools.
I just want to interject, too, that you're looking at two of our most recent hires, or more recent hires, and it's exciting to see folks that have been at the department. Janine's been here a year. Ryan started in September. Ryan's Deputy State Director for Career Ed. Janine is our World Language Content Specialist. So we talk about some of the fantastic folks that we have in our agency. And you're seeing two folks that are just jumping in feet-first with this work. So I want to be sure to note that they haven't been here for years, they've been here for months, and are just really leading the charge in some really exciting work, so.
What questions are there about what we've shared?
Your visits to the schools, which ones did you go to? Are they in big schools, small schools? How did you pick them? What did you find?
We visited Spring Lake Elementary in Omaha to primarily explore some of the standards-based technology-integrated instruction that is being done successfully there. We chose that after attending a presentation at which the, I believe Glenn, had communicated about what might be some possible locations where we would see some dynamic and standards-driven instruction. And these were recommended to us when we attended. A few weeks ago, we went to Iowa. I believe that there was a presentation here.
Sandra Dopp.
In the, yes.
Yeah.
And Sandra Dopp is the Competency-Based Education Director for Iowa. She invited us to tour some of their schools, and we went to Iowa Big, which is a project-based, standards-embedded, kind of driven educational experience that reflects competency-based education. We also toured a few of their other schools. Those are the primary ones that we have toured at this point.
Those were in Des Moines or?
I'm sorry, Cedar Rapids, Iowa.
Cedar Rapids.
Yes.
Molly?
Pardon me. One of our big tenants of AQuest is the project-based learning and also the personalized learning plans. So this is kind of a, I'm just trying to wrap my mind around competency-based education since I'm not on that committee. But I'm wondering, are you anticipating providing some models of project-based learning as it relates to your digital repository? So for example, I'm a little, I'm a kid in a little district, but I'm, maybe I'm really bright, and I decide I want to do something in careers. And so I go online, competency-based learning, and I say, "Oh, I want to be an engineer. What projects would lead me to that basis? How, what digital tools can I tap into?" And then I can go at my own rate. Am I thinking strangely?
I don't think so. I think that, at the heart, competency-based education, and Glenn got to this, is competency-based education is about advancing through content based on mastery of what the individual student knows and is able to do versus getting a grade and moving on, or sitting in a classroom for a certain amount of time and moving on. It's, at the heart, it's really about when a student is able to show or demonstrate what they know or able to do in that content area, they're able to move on then to the next level of proficiency in that content area. And so there's lots of ways to do that, or lots of strategies that can help get students there. Truthfully, a good lecturer could teach competency-based education completely through lecture. That could also happen completely through project-based learning or completely through digital resources. I think we know that having different ways or different modes of teaching is more effective than that. And so project-based learning would certainly be part of that, digital resources certainly part of that, online learning. So I think what our hope is, is through this exploratory project, we'll learn what some of those best practices are and those best activities that get to student mastery and competency-based ed. And I think it's pretty clear from what we've researched and read and know that project-based learning is a pretty critical component of that.
One thing, in the old days, there was a guy named Rick Stiggins, who was really the competency-based, I guess, precursor to that, because he said, "You should be able to advance at your own speed." But in my mind, when I go to the, I'm not going to call it the NAG, the Nebraska Association and Gifted Conference, sometimes really bright kids lose direction because they finish the competency, and then now what's next? So I guess what I'm, I'm more visionary sometimes in my policymaking. I hope as you create your vision for competency-based learning, you put it in your plan for career tech education, career pathways. Because wouldn't it be nice if this was an additional feature for a student in a smaller school district, maybe rural in nature, that they could tap in through competency-based education, get in a pathway maybe that's not even offered? I'm just asking you to be visionary in your planning so that when you do have students moving through competencies, it's just not aimless gathering of knowledge, but it's actually contributing toward future, futures in civic engagement. I don't know if that's possible, but that's how I envision, I would hope you're envisioning it to be incorporated with AQuest.
And I think that we've had some really good conversations around specifically high-ability learners. Today, we were talking specifically about special education students and how this whole nature of personalized learning really helps us differentiate for all types of learners. And so, you know, I think about a conversation I had with a school superintendent about a year and a half ago, where they said, "Maybe we need to rethink the senior year and what that looks like." So thinking about how we can help students, if they are at a point where they're ready to go on, that there's not an ending point, that it's a matter of saying, "Okay, you're at this point, let's take it to the next level," and perhaps connecting that with authentic experiences and the career interest that they're approaching. I think what we're also learning is there's a lot we don't know, and there's a lot of misconceptions about what CBE is or people think that it is. And so I think we still continue to have a lot of ah-hahs every time that we meet. So definitely, Molly, I think you're right on target with where we're thinking. It's going to be something we keep discovering, especially as we start working with these schools, because we want the schools to help us build what it looks like. We're not walking in with any preconceived notions. We're want to learn from them, too. So I think it's extremely exciting and how we're thinking about it and approaching it. It's really big.
Options?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Glenn, did you?
I was just going to say that we have put some stuff on the agenda for you to look over and learn more about competency-based education. There's a terminology website that we're developing, and there's also a notional schedule of when this is all happening. The applications will go out at the end of this month, and we're hoping to get them all back in by March first and then notify the participants that have been selected on March thirty-first. So this is really taking off. Very exciting. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Glenn. Thanks, Corey, Ryan, Janine, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, is there any other comments for today? If not, we are to item six, which would be adjournment. The regularly scheduled meeting of the State Board of Education will reconvene at nine AM tomorrow morning in this room. Thank you very much, everybody.